Okay, at six o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to the May 10 Town Council informational work session. Let the record read that the entire council, to include the mayor, are present. At this time, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Flag.
Flag. United States of America.
To the Republic.
The Father, the Father stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We recently lost a very special volunteer, Ron Draper. Most of you all knew Ron. I've been very active in the town. He served on the Board of Elections. He served on the Oyster Culmination Committee. Very active in his HOA. He was the Vice President, I believe, of Wicker Hill HOA. And it's a loss for everybody. So if you don't mind, I'd like to take a moment of silence for in memory of Ron Draper. Okay, thank you very much. First, short term rental update. The town administrator did send an update to the council, I believe, on Friday. And it's here now to for a more public update on where the town is with this. So I'll give it to Holly.
Thank you. So just as an update on the short term rental item, town council was notified in April that we would be seeking some further feedback from residents for informational purposes and that we would be speaking to Gonzalez Media and Research. The town has moved forward with that and started the process of gathering information from town citizens. Results are not finalized. However, they're expected to be finalized this month. And the plan would be to provide those results to town council during the June town meetings.
Okay, thank you, Holly. If the council wants to have some discussion, I'll begin with the council vice president, Derek.
Yes, thank you for the update, Holly, and thank you for your memo last week. It was very informative. You know, I think it's important that we, you know, we don't lose track of this. I know we are working on it behind the scenes, but I think it's also important that we show the public that we are as a town, working through this issue. We don't know how it's going to resolve yet, but we need to show that we're working through it. I'm happy to hear we'll have some dedicated, I'll say dedicated, but we'll have a work session next month with this topic heavily involved. And we should have a good discussion next month. I personally still support eventually deliberating our council to deliberate on what what this may look like in practice up or down, but I think we should deliberate on that. So we've been talking about it for a while, and I hope next month proves to be a fruitful discussion for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. Look forward to having further discussions at our next work session and at our next town council meeting, I should say, the June one. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg.
Um. Yeah, I was on the verge of probably saying too much tonight about this matter. I want to thank the mayor for adding it to the agenda this evening. And if that's going to be dedicated discussion and it's more appropriate to delve into some of the nuts and bolts of this matter next work session, I'm okay with that. I think it's important to advance an update for 2021, our views on short term rental, yea or nay. If council through the town doesn't support them, I think that's just as important. That's making a statement. And well, we know we need to come up and strengthen and make it completely unambiguous to anybody that's buying property in town. If we're not allowing those, there'll be a 2021 decision. So I'm looking forward to getting to that point, one way or the other. And again, thanks, Mr. Mayor, for adding this to the agenda.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. Larry.
I agree. Look forward to moving this forward as we're moving into the summer season, which is the peak for rentals like this. I think it's imperative that we, as a council, present our voice for the town. So I'm looking forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie.
You know, nothing that hasn't already been said by my fellow council folks. I just hope we, I hope we have a good discussion. I'll be, I'll be anxious to see the results of all the input that we're getting. It's certainly an issue that is. Everyone has an opinion on this one, so look forward to that.
Thank you, Charlie. And lastly, Valerie.
Yeah, the more information that we can get, the better. And the more residents that reach out, the better. And so I look forward to a robust discussion. I know I have, you know, strong feelings towards short term rentals. And if anyone wants to reach out and discuss, I am always available. So I look forward to that discussion next month. And I do think we need to bring this, as soon as practical, to closure so that people do know whether or not short term rentals are allowed in town.
Thank you. Okay. RFP Richfield Station Water Tower painting. You got this one, Holly?
Yes, just going to share my screen. Okay, so the town released a proposal for the Richfield Station Water Tower Painting and Repairs. This was released on E- Maryland Marketplace and sent to 39 potential bidders. There was a mandatory prebid meeting held April 6th, and we received proposals just recently here, late April. So I have a summary here of our bid results for you and a breakdown in the following pages that town council has been provided. We do not have a recommendation this evening. However, we're still in the process of contacting each of the bidders' references and looking at further detail, and we should have that finalized by midweek this week.
Thank you, Holly. Anybody have anything to discuss? I'll start with Dr. Bodine, if that's the case.
Yeah. So I look forward to, you know, when you have your recommendation. I did notice and wanted to note that we got bids from Georgia to Pennsylvania, and the two lowest bids are actually in Baltimore. And so quite the geographic spread this time. And this is a budgeted line item. So my only real question is, it was at one time, talk about the potential for branding the outside of the Richfield Station Water Tower. I don't think that's in this bid, is it?
It is.
It is, under what?
It's in part one, I believe, item two.
Okay, and has the administration come up with what they plan on suggesting for that?
In the RFP packet, we included the town logo, but I think that there's a couple other options that we could implement. Jay actually had been speaking earlier today on this, just the CB, the black and white CB that we've kind of coined as the town logo as well. So there are some options there, but this is basically what's been in the RFP is a two sided logo on the water tower.
Will the town council have input as which is selected?
Yes, we can definitely get that with town council.
You know, at least a discussion about what the branding should look like. Okay, all right, those are my questions.
Thank you. Charlie.
I don't have any questions. I'll be interested to see what you guys recommend, Holly, just based on the disparate numbers here. And I'm, you know, looking in at the line items, and I'm not exactly sure how to account for that other than some of them provide quite a bit more detail than others. So it'll be interesting to see what you guys feel is the right, right choice. I still would like to be sure that among the options for branding is, you know, something that might coincide, might work together with our discussions on wayfaring and walkability, or once we choose a branding, we tie that back in as well. So I'll be interested to see that. Thanks.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry.
Just, as was mentioned, I'm interested in the decorative painting. I'd be curious to see what that looks like. Actually, I was sort of happy when I looked at the bids, with the exception of one, they're relatively close together. So I think that's a good thing. It'll be interesting to see if there's any reason to not go with the low bid, although there's only not a whole lot, the 50 some thousand, $70 some thousand separating number one and two. So it'll be interesting to see how we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Greg.
Yeah, it looks like we've got a good, we've got good coverage with the bids. The one company, the real high bid, they're out of, they're out of Georgia, I think. But it looks like you've got good results here, and most of your, your, your decisions are probably going to be under budget. So looking forward to moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. No, this is looking good. I've really nothing more to add. I'll just second what some of the council members said in terms of looking forward to hearing more about branding options. Thank you.
All right. And Derek.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I do want to just to note that four out of the six bids were below budget. So that was nice to see, nice to see six bids as well. I do have one aesthetic type question, and this may be for Jay. You know, our, our, Jay, you're, you're very familiar with the water tower here in Chesapeake Village, as an example. They're, they tend to be like a very light blue. The water towers are painted a light blue, and that really shows the dirt as the rain runs off and underneath the globe. It just accumulates a lot of dirt. Is there any benefit to or discussion of painting these a different color? You know, like maybe like a darker color right underneath the globe? So it kind of hides, you know, the aesthetics, you know, of the dirt a little bit better, you know, but still, you know, maintains opportunity for branding or something, just makes it, I guess, long term, looking more long term. You know, we hate to repaint this, and then two years from now, it's, you know, it looks, you know, displeasing again. Is there any way to, or has there been any discussion of maybe changing off the light blue to a different color, you know, for that reason or any other reason?
Sure, and I understand exactly what you're talking about, that the spherical one here in Chesapeake Village is a little bit different. So there's a shady side, if you will, Derek, that does grow mold and different things. But that actual sky blue is designed for a reason. On an average day, it's supposed to be the color of the sky, so it doesn't stick out. But that's up, that's up for discussion, I would think. I don't know that you want to get too far away from a sky blue, because then it stands out every day. And, you know, it's kind of like a cell tower. People tend to get used to it, but if you change something or it's new. So yeah, there are color options, but we didn't really dwell into that. We went with the same color for a couple reasons, because there are areas on that tank that will not need to be totally stripped down. And one coat will color over the existing color. If we go to something darker, it might entail more work. So right now, the present bid is for the color that's on there, 99.9% sure. But one thing I wanted to throw out for the council and mayor and whoever made the sign on the logo, I'm looking at it as if you're going to have it facing east. You can see it from the New State Highway Bridge. You can see it from the rail trail. You really can't see it too much when you're actually in Richfield Station. But one thing to keep in mind, the simpler, like the CB sticker we have can be large and can be seen from far away. If we go into smaller letters or smaller, for example, the town logo, you're going to have to considerably enlarge it to be seen or read from far away. Just want to throw that out there.
All right, thanks, Jay.
Sure.
Okay. Water reclamation treatment plant filter covers. Holly, are you or John taking this one?
I'll start it off and then let John and Wayne provide any feedback they'd like to. So we went out to bid for the, sorry. We went out to bid for the filter covers for the water reclamation treatment plant. This had a much smaller potential bidder option for us, 19 bidders. And we received actually two at the mandatory prebid meeting, and only one bidder actually bid on this project. So we're looking at one, one bid coming in, and it is a budgeted item under the FY '20 capital improvement plan for the treatment plant. And Wayne or John, if you wanted to add anything there.
Well, I still think that it's only one bid. The bid that came in, I think it's a little high, just for the design, for doing just the filters, drawing up the filters and, you know, finding what type of filter covers to put on. I don't know if we should rebid it or possibly look into something else to find anything that we could maybe cheapen that price up a little bit to concentrate on just the design of the filters. I believe the clarifier covers are self explanatory. You, you just, you can pick out the type that you want, and they're all pre-measured. So it's just the install on, on the clarifier covers. There's really no drawing up any type of blueprints for that. So actually, it's just drawing up the blueprints for the filter covers themselves. And I guess the construction documents are under that, the schematic design, the bidding process, and the alternative solar power, the construction phase services and the project administration. But I don't know, my, I thought that would come in a little bit lower. But it's one bid, so it's, I don't know, what do you think, Wayne?
Hey, John.
Comments on it?
Yeah, as we discussed, I agree with you. I think this is high. With only one bid, we have nothing really to compare it to, but it certainly surprised me with the numbers. And I think as you and I discussed, maybe we investigate me managing the project with a designer under me to bring this project more in line where it needs to be and get it done faster. And I'm happy to pursue that and go down that, go down those roads.
Oh, I agree with that. Hundred percent.
So, okay, so having said that, are we gonna just put this effort on pause and do some more homework?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so this will come back to the council. If still, if the council chooses to make a parting comment on, on this, that's fine. If you do, if Derek, do you have anything that you want to add to?
Well, no, I was going to ask if we need to table this as well. But I guess my question would be, you know, Wayne, how, and John, you know, if we pursue what you're suggesting, how, when, when would we have an estimate of what that would be to make a decision on? And does that affect the need to get this done? You know, this work, this work done? And you said, you know, you could do it maybe faster. So maybe in the long run, it's, it's a better option. But if we don't move on this now and essentially look at another option, are we, are we putting any strain on the, on the plant or, or these filters at all by doing so? It sounds like the answer is no, but.
I'd say the answer is
Okay, look like Wayne froze, but I think I heard him say no. So all right, I don't have anything further, Mayor.
Thank you. Keith.
Yeah, thank you. I had a similar question, but I also, moving on, is, you know, I'm all for looking into solar powered options, add-ons. And I do want to, you know, continue into that, but I think it would be nice to also know, like, what is the return on investment in terms of what do we get for the solar as we go forward? And I didn't know if they provided that kind of information. It's just not presented here, or if that's something that we should ask explicitly for in the future.
So, so for, with that topic, we took a look at the plans, and, and we also brought over Councilman Jorski to the plan as well to look at some other areas that might make more sense, that would provide a larger span for solar. So we are looking at that. It sounds like solar is probably not a good option for this particular project. However, we're going to look at the entire structure and look at some solar programs to add.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, Greg.
Thank you. Good, good questions. I understand the scope of work is very specialized, and I'm not shocked that through, you know, a strong outreach through E- Maryland that it boiled down to one bid there. You know, you certainly would like to see more than that. And I appreciate some of the out of the box thinking, Wayne's comments there. Is, have we, or would it make any sense to outreach to any other treatment plants in the state just for contacts? You know, some companies that maybe we could call out and reach out to if we decided to rebid? That's just a question. I know Holly may already looked in that, but that's just a comment. I was wondering what the budget was for this.
John, do you want to cover the total capital improvement budget?
Yes, I think in this project, 250,000 to actually get the design included into the, the, get the design drawn up and everything and possibly bid it before physical year 21 is, has ended in June 30th. Now, we were hoping to get the design in included along with some possible bids and that. But I think we're just trying to get the engineering drawn up by the June 30th. But we're just trying to possibly get the design done and physical budget year 21, and then get the construction done in '22. We have some budget for the capital projects to get this done. And we're looking at every avenue to where we can get this and keep the price down on to the, to meet the budget and, and physical year '22.
Okay, so if we, if Wayne gets involved in the capacity that he just mentioned, would he be taking over basically line items, one and two? Up, up that, the bid result tab there? Hematic design and construction documents, is that what we'd be looking? Even though I see paying way more, you know, I suppose for that, whatever that works out to be, but that puts us in control, allows us to advance and get the design completed if, if town hall strongly felt that we needed to rebid it. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Larry.
Yeah, a couple of comments. One for my colleagues, it's important to note that the number we're looking at there, the lump sum of 86,520. It's important to understand that that is not the construction costs. This is the design and the project administration. So we're not actually looking at the construction costs of implementing these covers on the filters. So just something to keep in mind. As Holly mentioned, I did go out to the plant and meet with everybody there. We had some discussions about the solar panels and actually that there's the opportunity to look at doing solar in a number of places at the plant. So going forward, we might actually take item three out of this. Looked at also possibly looking to elevate the covers a little bit, just to be able to provide better access for the plant staff to able to observe the filters themselves rather than having the filters down low where you can't actually see filters. So there's a lot of things to look at. And then finally, I'll just suggest, and Wayne, you might want to look at this. Maybe this is an opportunity, if you can do some of the basic planning for this, is to actually go to design build, which sometimes tends to reduce the overall cost by going to a design build option. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie.
I am just curious. If, if you guys go down this, this path of sort of doing it internally, you know, and, and all, you both have said, you know, the same thing. You thought the numbers came in high. Can you just give an idea of what you expected them to come in at? And do you think that if you go down this path of having Wayne act as a PM, that, that you can achieve that?
Sure, Charlie. I think John and I both spoke about what we expected the budget to be, expected to be under $50,000 was our expectation. And I will reach out to some environmental designers who we work with, get some numbers, and I can report back to you whether we're going to be there or not. The numbers that I see here are, in my opinion, probably twice what they should be.
Yeah, so that's not, that's a, that's actually very good to know. So it's not that they're over by a hair.
No.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Charlie. And lastly, Valerie.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank the other town councilmen for the questions. They were quite, quite good. I guess my question is, this is really such specialized work that even though we sent it to 19 potential bidders, we only got one. Just looking at the previous bid that we just looked at where we had 19 six, that seems really small. Even if it is specialized, I guess I'm wondering why we only got one. But I guess you can't force people to put in a bid, obviously. But is there any reason for that? I mean, is that specialized?
My opinion, Valerie, is it is that specialized. It's not a large enough project for a bunch of people to bid on it. It's not a small enough project for, you know, just to, in my opinion, to hand it, hand it out to a design builder. Although we can go down that, up, down that route and see if I'm wrong. It is one that fits in the middle. And I think the one person who bid on it, they were from Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. So it's, you know, they've got a lot of travel time built in that quote, which I think is a reason why it's so expensive.
And then, first of all, I like the idea of Wayne doing the design and then acting as the project manager. So I'll kind of like ask, ask it this way. And we've had with this town council, like, for four or five years experience. Is there any risk in, in drawing up the design and then having that design built? Are we kind of like, are we assuming any undue liability this way? It seems pretty straight up, and I like the idea of Wayne doing it. I'm just trying to look for some unforeseen consequences that we might not be looking at long term. I like the idea a lot. I'm just, I just want to put it out there that, you know, I don't know if there's, because this is not my area of expertise, but if there's some benefit that I might not understand of having it go from design to build when it comes to like, because it is so specialized. Anyway, it's, I, I'd rather like the idea of Wayne acting as project manager, because maybe some of the problems that we've had at the plant can then. I'd rather like the idea of Wayne acting as project manager, because maybe some of the problems that we've had at the plant can then. You know, he can be right there and, and address them as they come up. It would be awesome. So it's just kind of like a thought that was. You know, it's so specialized and he knows exactly what we need. That's a good thing. As long as the builder actually. Built it to whatever he requires. I'm just disappointed that we only got one also. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, WRTP bearing closeout. Holly?
Yes. So the town contracted with Bering Construction back in two thousand thirteen. Whitman, Ryan Quire and Associates served as the owner representative, and this was for the E and R project upgrade. WRA was contracted by the town in two thousand and nine. It's been determined, we reached a settlement agreement with Bering Construction. That there were additional costs that the town was binding towards paying. Through a change order that took place late, late in the project closeout sometime around two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And that cost, as we've agreed to set in settlement, would be split between the town and Bering. So we have a request for thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars to come out of the water reclamation treatment plant. Current budget out of capital improvement line item, and these costs would be shared with our partners.
Thank you, Holly. Council questions? I'll begin with Dr. Bodine.
I'm just glad to see this finally settled. This has been discussed previously elsewhere, and so I have no questions.
Thank you, Valerie. Charlie?
Yeah, I don't like it, but it is what it is, and I think we've all beat that, that drum, so. Thanks for getting it done.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
I fully agree. It's time to wrap this up. I'm very disappointed in the. Services that have been provided by the people involved in this, but it's time to wrap this up. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Yeah, I'd like to echo Councilman Jaworski sentiments there. And I agree, it'll be good to close this matter out. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
Really have nothing else to add to that. I appreciate you all getting this closed down. Thank you.
Yeah, and lastly, Derek?
Yeah, nor do I. Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last item, resolution addressing access to Bayfront Park. Holly, you want to give it a go?
Sure. Okay, so this is a resolution. This is a resolution that is addressing Bayfront Park and continuing a limited capacity scenario at Bayfront Park. This does include the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department as also being allowed to come as guests. So this would cover town residents and the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department and their guests that they are accompanying to the beach.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty clear. I'll just go right to the council. Derek, you have any, anything to add to this?
No, I wholeheartedly support us continuing this this year. And I certainly appreciate adding the first responders as well. So, no, very, very well done and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
All right, thank you. Yeah, one question in terms of. First responders, it only includes the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. And I was just curious, does, does it not include the sheriff's office or the deputies or? And should it?
It, it does not.
Okay, why is that?
I think we're good as it is, Keith. I, I think, I, well, for one, I've been hearing from the, the first responders that work over at the, you know, fire department. They, they work solely here in town. Most of them are locals as opposed to our deputies who are not. And I really never heard any, I'm not sure any deputies want to go to our beach in their time off. That's the best I could do, certainly if, if, if we had an outcry. Yeah, no, it's a good question, but I think.
No, yeah, I was just curious. I think Larry is the one that mentioned this at one of our earlier sessions. And he said first responders, and in my mind, I was just like, oh, okay, first responders, and how would they be defined? I have no problem with it, you know, great North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, of course. I was just, like I said, curious as to how that decision was made and if that would cause any strife among. Other first responders that work, work for the town or, or are in the town. So I bring that up. Thank you.
Well, we, we could certainly think, we could think about including the, the Twin Beach deputies if that would be the way to. I identify that. I don't have a problem with that. Is that something that, that, that you would like? I mean, since we just started our discussion, I'm quite sure that, that Vice President Favre would have no problem with including the. The Twin Beach deputies and.
I mean, I don't see any reason why.
Not Keith, since it was your idea?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why not to. I, I guess.
I'm not going to argue with you on that one. So having said that, let's, let's take that addition and move forward with our discussion. Mr. Morris, and thank you, Keith.
Yeah, yeah, Keith's suggestion. That seems like good measure, I think. And I'm, I'm in support of the, the resolution. Frankly, I think that maybe we should give some consideration. To keeping it this way in perpetuity. And we could be known as the town that has a beach that's private to its, its citizens and first responders, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. And Larry?
Wanted to say thank you for including the fire department in there. Appreciate that. I agree that we probably should include the Twin Beach deputies. I wouldn't want to be the poor person working admissions there. If a deputy showed up and he would try to refuse admission to him. So I agree with supporting that. Thank you.
Yeah, it, it seems like it makes sense. Charlie?
I actually have a couple of comments. I certainly support the idea of adding additional first responders. But I wanted just put a, a, a note out there, Holly, that. I, I don't, I have no idea how this works, but what I don't, what I would be worried about is creating some kind of a scenario where you've got some. Some young folks working at the, you know, the, the gates, as it were. And they don't have the right tools to understand who should come, who's allowed in, who's not, what proper, what's proper identification. So I don't want to make it so complicated that you have, you know, these, these guys, these, these young folks working at the, at, at the door. And they don't know quite how to, how to turn someone away. So I just raised that as something for you and Marilyn, I guess, to be aware of. And if we add, I don't think, I don't think it over complicates it adding the deputies per se, but it's something to keep in mind if we make other exceptions and so on. I don't know if that's an issue or not. And then the other thing is. I respect what my fellow councilman Greg suggested. I would be, I think, a little more discussion if we decide to go down that route would be appropriate and some additional public input. But I think we're a long ways from making that decision. It's, it's an interesting idea, but I, I think we should proceed a little bit with caution if we talk about going down that road. I was going to actually say I'd like to see us revisit this, not necessarily next year, but even sooner and see if we want to open it up more. But I'm not opposed. I don't have a set opinion. We should do this. But I'd like to see us have a, a good informed discussion before we make that decision. Thank you.
And, and, and thank you, Charlie. And in response to that, and, and Greg as well is, yes, I do. As we approach the next budget season and we start talking about revenues or lack of revenues for that park. That's when I thought we would have that discussion and, you know, with, with COVID in the, in the rearview mirror. But yeah, that's definitely on my radar, and I support what, what Councilman Morris said as well about a, a, a town only beach. But that's a discussion for another day. But yes, thank you for all your input on that. And lastly, Valerie?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I like the idea of adding the Twin Beach deputies, but I think of first responders, it's expansive. And so I like that idea a lot. Understanding the caveat that you need to be able to identify those that are not residents. And have some sort of identification, which was already discussed. But my, I, I kind of like the idea in due time of having a discussion about having a municipal beach. Knowing it's how, just how sensitive it is in this natural environment. The sheer quantity of folks that tend to use it, I think it's a discussion worth, worth having. And saying that, I was wondering, I'm, I'm totally in support of this. Have we been turning away a lot of folks as they try to enter the beach?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll let Holly answer that.
And so to, to just address the first concern from Councilman Fink. The staff is equipped, those are two classifications, the fire department and the Twin Beach deputies. That would be very easy for them to identify because they have ID cards and they, they've been instructed on what to look for, and they've been doing a great job. And, and they do have the deputies' phone numbers, so whoever is on for that day, the shift, they have that schedule. And they can call them directly, so they can just drive by, and the deputies are doing a great job also of driving by on the hour. And just checking on staff and checking on the beach. I would say on the weekends, we started covering the beach early due to the nice weather. And absolutely, they're, they're turning away, you know, three hundred people a day of out of town. That, that still think that they can, can walk into the beach.
Wow, that, I'm sorry, that, that's outstanding. I hadn't, I did not realize that the numbers were that high this early in the season. Thank you for that clarification.
And I would just say that they, and we're just early in the season with not particularly nice weather. And seeing the size of that beach, I mean, I'm, this is a good response. So, and a good discussion, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? One follow-up comment, please?
Well, yes, I'm, that, that's fine, but I'll wait until the Dr. Bodine is complete with her comments.
I'm sorry, I thought she was done.
I was done.
It's hard to tell with, with this internet stuff, you know? Okay, thank you, Greg.
Yeah, just a quick comment about some of the concerns regarding confrontations with our staff or any volunteers for that matter at those facilities. And it's really for Holly, being a resident here in town as long as I have, I've seen a lot of stuff that has happened at North Beach with their volunteers. And their staff and trying to, and some of the struggles that they faced and the confrontations that, that do happen. With folks trying to get in there, I'm really pleased to, to hear that y'all are, well, I don't want to say there's even a curve there. You all are training, the training is important there, and we don't want our staff and volunteers to. Be in threatening situations. I know that, that that's hap, those conversations, that the beach deputies are talking to them about what to do. Should somebody be threatening? But, you know, the confrontations are, those, those are happening, and there is some training involved with that to help them make it the best it can be. That's all certainly concerned about their well-being. Thanks.
Indeed. Okey-dokey.
And Mr. Mayor, can I just address, just for the record, for Keith's suggestion, I do support that as well. You, you correctly anticipated my response there, but yeah, I think that's a great idea, and I would wholeheartedly support that. But I do have one other question that came up as we were talking in my mind. On the boardwalk end of the beach, the barriers are still in place, or at least they were maybe a week or so ago when I, when I was last there. Is the plan to leave those up this year or to take them down? That's my question.
I, I, I don't know that we, I've had that discussion with, with Jay and Holly, but it's, it's worth our while to, to discuss that. Yeah, and I go down there probably more than anybody, you know, but, okay, thanks for that. We'll, we'll, we'll bring it up.
Okay, absolutely. Thanks.
Right. Okay, Council Lightning Round. Dr. Bodine, we'll start with you.
Okay, guys, mark your calendars for June fifth. We're having a, the green team is sponsoring a bayfront cleanup. And it's not just a cleanup. We're also going to be trying to put the vines that are chipping some of the trees down there. So it's June fifth, Saturday at nine AM. And then we are also working on an event in cooperation with Northeast Community Center and Parks and Rec. To have a fall cleanup on the railway trail. And so that one, if everything works out the way we hope, might include kayaks. So it'll be a kayak and cleanup. In order to get us really into the marshes and get some of that stuff out of there. More information to follow on that one. And if you know of anyone that on Saturday, May fifteenth, might need a free oil change that has low income. Please have them contact me. You have my cell phone number. Just have them contact me. There'd be a free oil change, and I can tell them where to sign up and where it's located. So feel free to give out my cell phone number, have them text me, and on May fifteenth, they can sign up for a free oil change. So I hope to see you all on June fifth at Bayfront Park.
Thank you. Mr. Fink?
We had a, a good meeting, team meeting last week. Holly, or, or I'm sorry, Valerie organized it and was kind enough to let me piggyback on and with Calver County Parks and Rec. And we, we rehashed a number of the walkability topics. I'm hoping to have some hard schedules. To be able to provide to everyone and to Holly to put on our, our news blasts and maybe even newsletter. The timing with, with them is challenging, and I, Holly and I learned a lot about some of their, their process. And it, it does have some bureaucratic hurdles, so we're hoping to get that information soon. So stay tuned for that. In the meantime, we are having a walkability meeting next, to make sure I get this right. Next Monday, seventeen, May seven PM. And we will be, we will have a lot of input at that point in terms of picking our priorities. And I am going to be meeting with Holly and Jay later this week and Carla to learn a little bit more about. Just trying to arm our committee with all the information we need to, to turn these plans. Some of these plans into things you can actually walk on or pass or under in some cases. So stay tuned for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry, from the other banks?
Duck. Two things, I wanted to just comment that the Economic Committee is working on preparing some comments. That'll be submitted to Planning and Zoning and Comprehensive Plan. And then the second thing, I just want to make sure everyone is aware of our Memorial Day Ceremony. The beautiful picture behind our treasure, Mr. Clark, you can see Veterans Park there. We're going to be having a hybrid ceremony. In person at ten o'clock on Saturday, May twenty-ninth, and then it'll also be a hybrid broadcast. And you can go onto the town website to get information on how you and your family can participate virtually in that ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Yeah. I wanted to spend my time here just briefly talking about Ron Draper. I appreciate the moment of silence at the beginning of this meeting for Ron. And I think that most of us have had, had the privilege of meeting him and talking shop with him. Probably known Ron personally for our new, knew him personally for. I don't know, maybe seven or years or so. I really got to know him mostly after the first election. And having cups of coffee with him and his knowledge base will be sorely missed. There's a vacuum. There's a, there's a vacuum in knowledge there, the town. A lot of the things that he was involved in, the dredging and its science, I really learned. the dredging and its science. I really learned a lot about that stuff through Ron. And he, of course, he's right out there near the mouth there and he's just going to sorely be missed. And I just wanted to encourage all of us that, you know, there's plenty of people around us. I'm a firm believer that everybody has something to offer. There are things to learn from everybody. And then you have people like Ron, like Ron Draper, who are just walking encyclopedia books of so many things. And I'm saddened that will, there'll be conversations that won't be had with Ron, frankly. And just, I appreciate the moment of silence and, you know, bless, bless his wife. Thank you.
Before I go to Keith, thank you for your kind words, Greg. Most of you probably know Ron was a very close friend of mine for many, many years. And we had a little send off for him the other night. And one of the, one of the words that I said was that sums up Ron, I said, you know, everybody knows somebody that they say, oh, he or she knows a little bit about everything. Ron knew a lot about everything. I mean, he's like, as you said, he was a walking encyclopedia. There wasn't a, there wasn't a darn thing he couldn't figure out. You know, if you had a problem, you didn't know what, you didn't even know where to start, you called Ron up, he'd take you A to Z and it got done. So the town of Chesapeake Beach was blessed to have Ron Draper for three decades or so. And we're going to miss him dearly. So thank you. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update, Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Committee will have its next meeting, June third at six PM. And thank you all for being here tonight.
Thanks, sir. And lastly, Derek?
Yes, so, no, thanks. Thanks for mentioning that, Greg. You know, I'd met Ron prior to five years ago, but my fondest really memory is when he had Greg and I over to his house and we sat on it sat on his deck and he's showing us all the the features of the creek and how it affects the dredging. And it was really just very, not only eye opening, but it was just a pleasure just to hear him talk and his passion for everything in town. So it was, he's definitely going to be missed and really, really enjoyed every minute I had with him. I also want to give kudos to our Planning and Zoning Commission. They're not on our schedule tonight, but they've been working really hard. Seems like every, every time I look at my phone, one of their meeting pops up on the YouTube. So I know they're working really hard and I really want to commend them for taking our direction in really running, running forward meetings every two weeks to try to get the comprehensive plan done. So I really want to thank each and every one of them for their work. And also look forward to the discussions we'll have next month on the short term rentals and also seeing the results of the town focus survey that's going on. And then finally, most definitely look forward to passing the remaining budgets next week. It'll be the, what, fifth year in a row, we've done it in May. So that'll be, that'll be another great achievement. So looking forward to that as well. Hope everyone has a great night and thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
There's a sec. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, folks.
And the ayes have it. Good night, everybody.
Night.